This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council Tuesday, August 25th. We have our invocation led by Pastor Byron Daniel, Mount Zion Primitive Baptist Church. Hold on, Pastor.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. May we pray? Almighty God, we honor your name and Lord, we are grateful for who you are. Father, as a country, we pray that you do not leave us to ourselves. There is a remnant that is still leaning on your word that says you will never leave us nor will you forsake. The city of Mobile is determined to be rooted and grounded in your wisdom and we depend upon your divine intervention to help us make it through day by day. Thank you for the gift of dedicated people who serve on this city council, for each person in every level of responsibility who has loved and defended the rights and the dignity of your people they represent. Thank you. The gift of our leadership through our mayor. Lord, we humbly brace your presence in this meeting and we request a breath of your great wisdom to use as issues affecting your people are discussed and we're asking for your guidance. We ask this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Mr. President, if we could also have a moment of silence, please?
Yes, ma'am.
In honor of Mr. Raphael Maharaj, for those of us who've been around City Hall for a long time, Raphael was a fixture. He always had a great smile, a lot of excitement about everything going on at the city. But it's with sadness that we have to tell you that Raphael has died. He did all kinds of things at the city. He was a former service contract technician, worked in building services. He retired from the city of Mobile with 26 years of service. The family will observe a celebration of life on the 25th, which is today. Well, it says Tuesday, August 25th, so I'm guessing maybe we got the date wrong, but they will observe a celebration of life at Pinecrest. And then they said because of, of course, COVID-19, they can't have what they would hope to have, you know, the funeral and a celebration with a lot of friends and family. So they're just going to do a small family gathering now and then later on they'll do a celebration of life. So I just ask you to please keep Raphael's family in your thoughts and prayers and if we could, just a moment of silence for Raphael and his family.
Roll call. President Manzi.
Yeah.
Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning. The rules for this particular meeting are as follows and we are meeting electronically through the Zoom apparatus due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And we ask first that you would turn off all of your electronic devices before or upon entering the council meeting. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution, ordinance, appeal, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state for the record both his or her name and address. And the person wishing to speak on an non-agenda item, contact the city clerk's office on the Thursday preceding the meeting in which you'd like to speak by 2:00 P.M. We ask that all of your subject matters be pertinent to city of Mobile business. If you haven't given that notice, then you won't have the opportunity to speak. Speakers are granted five minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of four minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates that all of your time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to myself who serves as chair and then I will subsequently recognize any council member who wishes to respond or to maintain the quorum. There will be no undue applause and all public outcry allowed. There's some additional commentary that was related to us meeting electronically due to the governor's order relative to the COVID-19 pandemic and we're going to ask that all rules applied and applicable through that order will be recognized as well. Those are the rules for this particular meeting.
Approval of minutes of August 11th and 18th.
So moved.
Second.
We probably moved to second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good job. Thank you.
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank everybody joins me saying how grateful we are that the hurricane Laura's headed elsewhere. We certainly want to keep those in Texas in our thoughts and prayers, but I am tremendously grateful, as I know you are, that it's not coming here. Also, if you have been looking at the county health department, state of Alabama trending numbers on the COVID-19 cases, they are definitely continued the downward trend, which is also very gratifying. And as you think back on the things that are being done differently, I think that simply that you're seeing better compliance with the masking order and you're also, people are recognizing that the social distancing and the good hygiene all combined are making a difference. It'll be interesting to see what happens in the next couple of weeks to see if there's been an impact from, from the various high school football activities and other sports events. But anyway, the trend is in the right direction. We know that we can make a difference and I'm really, really grateful that the citizens of Mobile recognize that and embracing it. This Friday at 10:00 A.M., we'll be swearing in the Mobile Fire Rescue Department's new chief, Chief Jeremy Lamy. Due to the COVID-19 procedures, we will be live streaming on the city's digital media sites. Many of you received invitations for this, but anyway, we're excited about the swearing in of Chief Lamy, who actually starts, I think officially, I think is, starts duty on that Friday, but I think the day is actually Saturday, if you were crossing i's and dotting t's. But anyway, congratulations to Chief Lamy. Another exciting event will be, we'll have our first virtual community meeting for the Africa Town community. That'll be this coming Monday, August 31st at 6:00 P.M. During that virtual meeting, we will be updating the community on the city projects, one of which will include the Welcome Center. Anitra Henderson is our point of contact for that. And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to Anitra. Anyway, so it's good to be here today and look forward to the rest of the meeting. Thank you very much.
Monthly finance report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry, go ahead, Madam Secretary.
Monthly finance report.
Good morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
This is the July monthly financial report. We are in the second month of what I think we have to term a recovery from the period of time that we saw some give back in our local economy. Sales taxes flowing into all of our funds, capital and general, were up in July, about $1.4 million higher than last July and $1.4 million above our, our budget for that month. In the, in the general fund by itself, total revenues were up about $950,000 above budget. So we're seeing about a 60-day trend in, in recovery. As we've talked about in the past, some of that recovery is uneven. Our big boxes, grocery stores, home improvement centers are seeing above normal increases in, in transactions while some of our other revenues are down, including the public venues such as the Civic Center and Convention Center, our museums, the Singer Theater. Some of our privately owned venues also are not open yet, although one bright point, maybe a, a sign for the future is AMC opened its Mobile Theater on Schillinger Road on August 20th and the Crescent Theater downtown is going to open this Friday. Of course, there will be distancing requirements and masking requirements, but at least people who, who wish to, to view movies on the big screen will have an opportunity to do so. We are seeing a decrease that I think is outside of the, the realm of pandemic in our, in our franchise fees. We're down about $1 million to the budget for this year and that is actually a multi-year decrease that is being experienced to a greater extent this year. We believe that is primarily due to customers dropping legacy providers of cable and other right-of-way supported transmission lines in favor of satellite and other wireless services. You've heard of cutting the cord. I think, I think our cord is getting cut. So we will probably see a sustained loss in those areas and we factor that into the budget that we'll talk about later today. So I suppose the, the news is good. It's better for us than it is for lots of our peer cities and we'll talk a little bit more about that this afternoon in the finance committee meeting. So that is my report. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. West. Thank you, thank you. Good, good news and look forward to hearing even more.
I have a question, if I may. Mr. West, do you know if the city has applied for any COVID trends from the state that we make the jurisdiction on that we could apply for and has that been received?
That's a, that's a very good question. We have not, although we're getting close to making that decision, Mrs. Rich. We had delayed because of the uncertainties surrounding whether Congress might pass a, either a new act or amend the existing CARES Act, the second pandemic piece of legislation to allow revenue replacement. However, at this point, it does not look like Congress will take that action. They probably will come up with a new pandemic act, but everything we're hearing out of both the House and the Senate side are that revenue replacement will not be amended into the CARES Act or added in a separate act. So that, that gives us flexibility to go ahead and pursue some reimbursement of COVID-related expenses to this point. So we have not done that yet, but we are leaning towards going ahead with that, even though we do not have a definitive message from, from Congress.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. West?
Yes.
Ms. Richardson?
Paul, I did see the budget online on the city's website. You intend to add the budget if so, when?
Mr. Richardson is there.
Yes, sir. It was added shortly, shortly after, I guess it was added on the 20th, the morning of the 21st.
I looked at, I looked at it last night. I didn't see it, but I'll check again.
Okay. If, if you have a, if you have a problem, give me a call and I'll walk you through the website. It's, it's not the simplest thing in the world, but it is, it is there, two clicks away from the, from the front page.
Okay, got you.
Any other questions of, of Mr. Paul West? All right, thank you.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Mr. President, I've moved, we adopt the agenda and declare all items listed on the agenda as essential COVID-19 items, COVID-19 items.
We probably moved to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye. Appeals. We have requests for way with a noise ordinance on September 6th near Mardi Gras Park and on August 29th on Holmes Drive.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved to second. End of discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Public hearings today. It's a public hearing to declare the structures at 2910 Berkeley Avenue, 1808 Brownlee Street, 480 Macarley Street, and 2353 Hart Avenue, public nuisances and ordering them demolished.
Is, is there anyone present that would like to speak during any of the said public If not, the public hearings are closed.
Essential COVID-19 items held over 34025, ordinance to amend Chapter 34 of the city code regarding short-term lodging or rental.
Mr. President, I would like to lay this over for 90 days.
Second.
We probably motioned in second. We lay over for 90 days. All in, any discussion?
Yeah, let me just fill you in for those who will not able to make our committee meeting on Friday. We had a lot of good questions and were provided with a lot of really good information from people who are hosts in short-term rentals. For the most part, they do participate in the platform for Airbnb. That's what we learned, that probably 99% or so of them actually participate in this type of marketing, which has a requirement of many things that we're looking for, which would be safety, insurance, you know, that kind of thing. But we're looking at tweaking the original draft that we've all seen based on what we heard. So I'm hoping that by the end of the week, we'll have something that we can send out. The, the hosts that we were talking to have a contact person now so that we can send our information to one person and then they will share it with the rest of the group to help us better make sure that whatever we end up with is something that's fair and equitable that everybody, you know, can live with and can agree to. So we're still in the process, we're still working on it, but I am very positive about where we're headed with this. And again, we had a great meeting. It was one of the better committee meetings I think we've ever had because everybody was just so positive and the hosts were probably the ones that, you know, that really brought that energy to the meeting because they are such cheerleaders for the city of Mobile. So we really thank them for that. But again, we hope to have a, a tweaked ordinance of some sort to send out by the end of the week so that everybody can take a look at it and then send in their suggestions for their questions, whatever they may be.
Good, good job, Ms. Gregory. I've heard nothing but, but positive things about the committee meeting from the citizens who contacted me. So thank you and I look forward to getting the next draft.
If we could comment?
Sure. Ms. Rich?
Thank you very much. And I too would like to thank Ms. Gregory for conducting a really positive meeting. It was very, very productive. There is a misnomer in the community and that was the intent is to charge taxes and that's not the intent of this ordinance. They already pay their taxes, they pay it through the portal. We got that all clarified. So that's one thing that really needs to be clear. This wasn't a, an idea of coming in to tax for this particular industry. It's more to license and, and actually I hope help flourish the industry. So again, it's more for licensure and what it takes for them to get their license and hopefully it's something that they see as a very positive mechanism and it allows our city to even identify some of those great cheerleaders, so to speak, in our community. So again, I look forward to working with this industry and with the committee and, and getting this to a, a good resolve. So thank you, Ms. Gregory, for all of your input and your conducting of the meeting and reaching that group as well. Thanks.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes, sir.
I was absolutely shocked to find out how many people in District 4 own Airbnb and how many people I know that are hosts. With that said, what I told them is I think that they ought to be treated much like a bed and breakfast and, and I know there's some differences and I know that every host of a short-term rental is not with Airbnb. But we may want to, if we haven't already contacted Airbnb and I encourage all the hosts from Airbnb to do so, is to have Airbnb get engaged. We're not going to know what Airbnb wants if Airbnb, a very well-known worldwide company, if we don't engage them. And if Fred, I know remembers, I don't remember who else was on the council at the time, Gina definitely, but we had a trouble with, with another industry and that was garbage, our trash bins being dumped, dumpsters, we called it, the dumpster. We went to waste management, to Republic Services and Coastal, they came to us at our encouragement and they each gave us their take on what would help to better regulate the entire industry. And that regulation is, or that piece of legislation is still in effect and it's still working. So I just, I continue to encourage the industry to get involved if they don't want to just get it straight from us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any, any further commentary? Good, good job, Ms. Gregory. Madam Secretary.
We need to vote.
Oh, my fault, my fault. We had the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
34026, ordinance to amend the capital improvement plan.
Motion to delay it over for two weeks.
Probably motion in second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to be calling a committee meeting next Tuesday, which is September 1st, immediately following the council meeting before we can discuss this particular item.
Yes, sir. Any further discussion?
Yes, yeah, what time, what time is that?
Immediately following the council meeting.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I had him slayed over for two weeks.
01598, authorized agreement with Spire Gulf for relocation of utility facilities on public right-of-way during roundabout installation at the intersection of Broad Street and Canal Street. 08599, approved purchase order to Gulf Marine Construction for boat lift. 08600, approved purchase order to Truck Equipment Sales, Inc. for aerial lift trucks. 08602, approved purchase order to Train U.S., Inc. for four variable frequency drives for the West Mobile Regional Library. 09604, appropriate money in the Rebuild Alabama Special Revenue Fund for the Tiger Dr. MLK Junior Avenue, Broad Street project. 21605, authorized contract with Midwestern Commercial Roofers for Hotel Street Armory re-roofing. 21606, authorized contract with Michael Baker International, Inc. for C.E.N.E.I. Engineering Services, CIP, bridge, bridge maintenance and repairs. 21607, authorized contract with Harris Contracting for Rickaby Park grading and drainage improvement.
So moved.
Second.
And probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Essential COVID items, 02027, 6638.
Motion to suspend the rules for immediate consideration for essential items, COVID-19 items, 03-620, 03-621, 21-626, 37-628, 37-629, 58-634, 58-635, 60-636, 60-637, 60-638. The rest will wait over one week.
Second.
Is we probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
03620 and 621 are approving the mayor's appointment of Anitra Henderson as Executive Director of External Affairs and Communications and Joseph Snowden as Executive Director of Administrative Services. 21626, authorized contract with H&amp;H Electric Company for emergency generators for public works facilities. 37628 and 629 are recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of retail beer, table wine, off-premises-only license for Family Dollar on Pleasant Valley Road and for retail beer, table wine, off-premises-only license for Family Dollar on Navco Road. 58634, authorized removal of weeds, Group 1606. 58635, add Lawn Love LLC to the rotation list of contractors to abate properties declared as public nuisances. 60636 and 637, I'm sorry, 636, determine an appropriation to Williamson High School boys' basketball serves a public purpose and approved payment. 60637 and 638 are approving award of special bonus to firefighter of the month, fire service driver Demond Clark Jr. and for special bonus to officer of the month, Jimmy Byrd.
So moved. Second.
And probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Reggie Hill.
Hello? Are you muted? Mr. Hill?
Are you out there, Mr. Hill?
He's out there. He's out there.
I see someone identified as Hill on here.
Right.
Is it muted?
Mr. Hill?
Let's go ahead and vote on the next couple of things and if he comes back in, we'll, you know, if it's okay with everybody, we'll get him back on.
Go remain.
Okay, call for public hearing. 41. Okay, call for public hearing. Forty-one six-three-nine, call for public hearing to consider the vacation of a five-foot strip of land adjacent to lot four B, Walker's addition to Broadwood, District Seven, scheduled September twenty-second. Forty-one six-four-zero, call for public hearing to rezone property located at fifty-five thirty-five Linwood Steiner Road and fifty-five seventy-five U.S. Highway ninety west, east side of Linwood Steiner Road, U.S. Highway ninety west, one hundred feet north of Coleman Road, two hundred feet east of University South Highway ninety west, from B three and B five to B three, District Four, scheduled September twenty-second. I'll take the next one separately.
So moved.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Forty-one six-one, six-four-one, call for public hearing to consider the revocation of the business license of deep-water marketing for houses located at two fifty-nine, two sixty-one, and two sixty-three, South Broad Street, District Two, scheduled, um, September twenty-second. Need an amendment? We need an amendment?
We're gonna make a vote, second, first, and then we'll, then we'll do that.
Okay.
This, this, discussion, President?
Uh, is, is, is there any discussion?
Uh, yes, Mr. President. Uh, would like to, uh, move the September twenty-first date up and amend it up, uh, move it up to September the fifteenth, to September.
It's been properly moved in second, uh, that the calling of the public hearing will go from the twenty-second until the fifteenth. Uh, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
You, you, you opposed?
No, he was late. He was just late.
Okay.
Okay.
Apparently, my, apparently, my audio is running a little bit late.
Oh, okay.
That happens.
Appreciate it.
It happens that way.
I fully support the sternest measures being taken to address this.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Now, do we go back to the original item as amended? Uh, is, is there a motion in second? Well, I guess it's already done that. Uh, discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
Okay, we'll go back. Uh, Mr. Hill, are you here? Are you present? Reggie, Mr. Hill?
Something has gone wrong.
I think we need to get double time next week.
No, let's move on.
Okay, uh, announcement.
Ms. Gregory?
Uh, hello?
Oh, there he is.
Can, can, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can, can, may I start?
Um, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Uh, Mr. President, members of the council, uh, Mayor Simpson, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, good morning. Reggie Hill, one thousand seven Sinister Street. Uh, if you're able to pull up the email that I sent to the City Clerk's office, uh, that might be a good time to do so. I will go on order, uh, which the questions were submitted with exception to number seven. That's the line item zero-two, that's zero-two-seven. I'm gonna say that to the latter end of my remarks. I want to begin with thirty-five-zero, uh, two-five, Airbnb, commend the chairwoman of that committee for, uh, great meeting. Uh, because it's layover, I will simply express my concern. Uh, to have policy that reflects responsibility for the primary contract, uh, relations to the Mobile Municipal Code, uh, in reference to the hosts as well, we know that being this is a place of many celebrations and festivals, we might have citizens, uh, who could become penalized. And so we just want to make sure that structure is, uh, direct in the language. Uh, next, thirty-four that's zero-two-six, uh, with the C I P. I'm glad to see this is laying over for two weeks. I hope that we're really going to examine section two-point-three. We see that there are resources already in place for these type of expenditures that are being proposed. I hope that we'll look at this in the committee meeting. Zero-eight that's five-nine-nine, uh, I still have no answer on what this boat lift is. I've asked this for the past couple of weeks. Uh, would like for the administration or someone to address that. Uh, zero-eight six-hundred, I'm so thankful to see this bucket truck finally in place. And the old folks used to say, uh, the squeaky wheel finally gets the grease. That is something good. Thank you for that. Uh, the two-one-six-zero-six, I want to thank the council for those bridge repairs. Very vital for our city. Two-one-six-zero-seven, I'm excited to see the drainage, uh, repairs coming to the Rickaby Park. Thank our councilman for that. Um, zero-three that's six-twenty, I want to extend my congratulations to Anitra Henderson again. I will be reaching out to her, uh, sooner than anticipated, seeing that the mayor has announced a meeting in Africa Town next week. So I'll be expecting those communications. Zero-eight that's six-two-two, um, the wall panels, I want to address that, seeing that, uh, the distinguished gentleman from District Four addressed it this morning. Thank you for posing that question. Zero-eight that's six-two-three, um, I want to just be able to compare the ratio of equipment that's purchased for specific city departments, uh, in relations to that at our community centers. Uh, we don't have any kind of idea of what that'll be used for per se. I see that it wasn't taken up today. Hopefully, we'll get some answers in the coming days. I'll send those communications over to the clerk's office. Six-zero that's six-three-six, uh, of course, I want to extend my congratulations to the team, uh, bringing the state title back here to the city of Mobile. These are resources well deserved. Hopefully, we'll see more like that spent without in the district. Um, and to my, uh, non-agenda item, I just, this police citizens advisory council, uh, with them not having the ability to do independent investigations or subpoena power oversight, I just don't have any clarity on why it's going to exist or what benefits it will bring to the city. I posed this question since the inception of this way back, uh, years ago. So I'm hoping that we can finally get this addressed now, seeing that it's more pertinent to more citizens within the city. Um, looking at the, uh, chapter fifty-two of the Mobile Municipal Code, I had a communication from Mr. David Doggamba regarding the determination and designation for structures and properties. But that is a very broad chapter. If there are any, um, documentations or evaluation metrics that are provided to the council, that would be great for the public to know, because again, we see this highly in communities that are high poverty or more so underserved. And I would just like to have a better structure on how we, uh, determine those costs and the bids and everything else related to it. Um, when we define, uh, this role that we're seeing in zero-two that's zero-two-seven about the speakers, I mean, let's just pay attention. In the rules, the first portion of the rules is related to the speakers. I don't believe that it's fair when the counselors are asking questions about item on the agenda or asking to be added to sponsors as items to the agenda that we have clarity on what's actually going on. So of course, the citizens will be wondering what's happening in, in, in the process of city business. So I believe that as we move forward, we need to make sure that the citizens are recognized as the primary reason for, of even having a meeting. These are citizens concerned. And I would believe that if we can sit through meetings with other rhetoric that are going on, that the citizens should have the opportunity. I proposed before that we submit opportunities to present to committees, which would alleviate people having to come down and speak. But we've had no address on that as well. When we talk about some of these things and writing, I've been writing stuff for years and still waiting on answers. So I hope that we'll look at this and review it going forward. Um, I would like to, uh, know the definition of the role between the city council and the Mobile Housing Authority. Because of my time being pressed right now, I won't be able to get into all the details of that. But there have been many communications to me with people in public housing, as well as those who've been dealing with HUD, and these issues have had no addressing. And it's like everyone's getting the runaround. So hopefully, I will submit all of these questions again to the clerk's office. And I thank the clerk's office for being so transparent and getting this information out to the council and administration. I would love to get some feedback. Thank you for yielding the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. That's all the time. Uh, announcement?
Ms. Gregory?
Hi. Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that. Um, my big announcement for today is that this coming Friday, August twenty-eighth, the Alabama Department of Transportation will open bids on the second phase of the Ziegler Boulevard whitening project. And that truly is a huge, huge deal. Um, y'all have heard me talking about this, I'm sure Ed and Ozzy. But, um, the second phase is the most difficult phase. It is the one that had to be redesigned a couple of times. We also had to go back and forth negotiating with the railroad, and that took some time. We've had utility work going on. So it is a very complicated and long drawn-out process that we have been working on now close to twenty. So I'm just very excited that we have gotten this far. Uh, bids will be opened on the twenty-eighth this Friday. So they will, uh, negotiate and come back with a contractor. And we should see some construction starting maybe November-ish. Uh, certainly signs will start going up to alert all the motorists who drive that, uh, route, um, that, um, traffic delays will be coming and the construction will be coming. So for the people who live along Ziegler Boulevard, this is a really, really big project, one that they have been waiting for, for a very long time. And of course, I've been waiting for it for a very long time as well. And I'm excited to see it happen. We'll be sending out some more letters and information to the residents who live along Ziegler to remind them that work will be starting, and they will see construction delays. But I think all in all, this is such an exciting project, one we waited for, for this long, twenty years. Um, people will understand the traffic delays and some of the other things that are involved in making this project happen. But, uh, it will be really exciting. Uh, it'll take probably two and a half years to get it finished. Now, the first phase, which is from Schillinger to Cody Road, is well underway. That one was a much more simplified project. Um, nobody really lives along that area. There are a few businesses. Um, so they have made a lot of headway on that section. Uh, and I'm really glad to see that. We haven't had any real bottlenecks. Um, the traffic delays have not been a real problem. Things have worked well. So again, as soon as we start seeing construction, signs will go up, and we will alert neighbors who live around, um, who live off and opposite or, um, to the project that is coming up. And I hope everybody will be happy. It's certainly something that, uh, they've been waiting for, for a long time. So that's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Mr. Williams?
No, thank you.
Mr. Vice President?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I would like to, um, say to some of the citizens that have been asking about Helenwood Park, uh, about the boardwalk, uh, that the city engineers are still looking at it. Um, this time, we were looking, tried to fix this boardwalk, uh, correct and right. Um, seemed like every two years, we have a storm that come through and it knocked down this boardwalk. And, uh, we just, you know, opened it up about two years ago, and here we, here we are facing again, it's damaged again. So this time, we're going to do it right. So the boardwalk at Helenwood Park will be down for a little while till the city actually get together and decide exactly what needs to be done for, we don't have to keep on spending money over and over and over again. But we'll keep the citizens updated on the information I get from that situation. Also, would like to remind all the citizens, um, not only in District Three, but throughout the city of Mobile, the inner services, city services that you need, uh, between overgrown grass, flighted properties, et cetera, please dial three-one-one. If you cannot dial three-one-one from your cell phone, please dial two-five-one-two-zero-eight-five-three-one-one. And again, uh, wishing everyone a happy week and a safe upcoming weekend. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Ms. Rich?
Thank you very much. Um, I do want to echo the sentiments that this, um, bad storm that's coming onto the Gulf Coast is not the Gulf Coast related to us. So, um, extremely grateful and sorry for the inconvenience and hopefully no harm to anybody, um, as it comes ashore in the next couple of days. And I guess it's Texas. So, uh, thoughts and prayers are with all of those citizens that will be dealing with that. At pre-conference, I talked about the towing ordinance for holding it up. It is on the city's website for people to review, especially people in the industry. And I look forward to that coming to, uh, closure and a vote for next week. And I thank everyone, um, and the list is long, who helped, um, draft it and create it and to work with everybody involved. So again, that'll be up for next week. But if you want to read it, especially people in the industry, I urge them to go to that, um, website, our city website, and find it. If they can't find it, please let me know, and I'll get it to them. But thank you. That's it.
Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Rich, and we appreciate all your leadership, uh, and the toll they've gone through to get us to this point. And it's been a process, and we appreciate all your efforts. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we will have a meeting of the city council's finance committee this afternoon at two o'clock. Uh, this will be to, uh, this is a working session for counselors to, uh, learn more about the, uh, administration's proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget. Our fiscal year begins October first, uh, and so this will be the budget that covers October first of this year to September thirty next year. Uh, this is a, uh, work session for the council, uh, and so we will not take any public comment at the meeting this afternoon, but it will be streamed if anyone wants to watch it. Uh, and then we will take public comment at our meeting next week, September first at ten-thirty a.m. Uh, and people who want to sign up for the, uh, uh, to speak to us at that time for the public meeting, uh, Madam Clerk, would you just run through once again, uh, people who want to speak about the, uh, budget next week at the public hearing, how do they sign up to do that?
Um, they can, reach us at cityclerk@cityofmobile.org, um, Thursday by two o'clock.
Okay. So that's it. If you want to speak about the public, uh, if you want to speak at the public hearing on the budget, please, uh, let the clerk's office know by, uh, Thursday at two o'clock.
It's, it's an agenda item. So don't they have till Monday?
Oh, okay. I forgot. It is an agenda item. So they have until Monday at twelve o'clock. Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Rich.
Monday at twelve o'clock is the deadline. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Uh, Mr. Richardson?
Yes, um, Mr. President, thank you very much. Um, I would just like to, to remind all of our citizens in the city of Mobile, especially those in District One, we have a holiday coming up. The police has already made it known that they're going to be out, um, policing. Uh, I said that, uh, for you to know. Drive careful, drive safely, enjoy the holiday, and, um, I hope all goes well.
Playing from iPhone. All right. Uh, I want to, uh, thank you, Mr. Richardson. I want to remind, uh, residents of, uh, downtown and those who regularly use Broad Street that the next phase of the Broad Street redevelopment is moving forward, and it's coming, uh, to Broad and Canal Streets, where we will be constructing a new roundabout. And so there will be signs and variable message boards in place. Uh, drivers are asked to obey a twenty-five mile-per-hour speed limit. And, uh, the work is hopefully, it was due to start this past Monday, but due to inclement weather, uh, it was pushed back to this forthcoming Monday. And we are hopeful that all of the work will be, uh, completed by February of twenty-twenty-one. And so, uh, there's a lot of great things happening on Broad Street. Uh, we have some issues that we're trying to work through and that we're passionate about. And we're passionate about them because , uh, the residents in these communities are so passionate with us about getting something done. And so, uh, what, but yet we're making progress with, uh, park improvements. Uh, we've got two new parks that need to be open. One on the upper end of MLK, brand-new basketball facility, the other there at Catherine and St. Stevens. And, uh, uh, Catherine St. Stevens Road, uh, the Lafayette Heights Park, a park designed by the senior population in that community. Beautiful facility. And we're looking forward to, uh, hopefully, once everything is cleared up by Parks and Rec Department, uh, setting some dates, uh, to open those facilities up. Uh, that concludes my announcements. Uh, any, anyone else? Uh, is there anyone in announcements from the administration? If anybody left? Okay. If not, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Probably moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of adjourned?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you all so much.